All right, ready? I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 2nd, 2024 meeting. It's at fish times six o'clock. If I could get an approval agenda at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it, aye? It's our pleasure tonight to have Tim Ingram with Ingram Associates going to open us up in the application and pledge.
Let's pray. Father, thank you. Thank you for these men and women that serve as commissioners and the staff of our county. Thank you for the men and women serving the DA's office and the fire department and the sheriff's department, the war department, and all the other agencies that we have, Father. I know some days it's a very thankless task, very thankless job. We appreciate them, Father. We thank you for their dedication to our county to making this a better community. Father bless our commissioners tonight with wisdom and guidance. May their conversations be uplifting. May the decisions be made in the best interests of our county. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ingram. All right, before we start our planning the zone tonight, anybody that's here that's in opposition to any of these requests, you will get an opportunity to speak. Mr. Patraski, you want to start us off?
Chairman, our first item is a request by Johnny Lee Edward. It's to rezone from Ag 1 to C2 to allow a repair shop. This is located at 395 Eatonton Highway consisting of three acres. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning to C2 with the stipulation that a barrier be erected to shield any vehicles or equipment from public view.
All right, is Mr. Edwards here tonight or a spokesperson? Mr. Edwards coming? Welcome.
Welcome.
Just give us an idea what all you want to do and get any questions that the board might have for you.
Yeah, I plan on doing a motorcycle shop here in Jones County. We, that were, the building there obviously is on Ag 1, so I have to change it to C2 or to commercial use so I can get a business license or whatever. And to get open. Yeah, that's, I plan on, you know, like they're a motorcycle shop, but they want to put a barrier wall or something of sorts. I'm like, I don't know how that works or that would, I seem like that would interfere with having a business, you know, block it from the view of the public or from the roadway. So that was my only concern, but my plans of having motorcycles out, they're all going to be inside of that building. And I plan on closing one more area right there to make it enclosed fully. But anything that has to be pushed out during the day for me to work or whatever will be put back up in the evenings. So everything will be, you know, nothing will stay out, stuff like that. I mean, I take care, you know, y'all cut the grass and all that, make it look nice, keep it clean. So that's the, well, plans with it.
Any questions from the board?
Is it just going to be motorcycles or small engines?
Uh, motorcycles, especially if my motorcycle is four-wheeler, ATVs, side-by-side, stuff like that, because I know it's a lot in Jones County, it's a lot of off-road stuff. But that is my main expertise is in that, those platforms.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Chairman, I got one of them. Take my glasses off and then try to read, that doesn't make a lot of sense. It's somewhere it talks about, yeah, so enclose the existing kennels, kennels on the building and use the existing building as a motorcycle and small engine repair. So in closing the kennel, is that what you're thinking about using for the storage?
Uh, well, that was actually where the kennels are, I was going to close that and that was going to be the shop area.
Shop part, store everything in the other one?
Inside, you know, I have to add a double door to get units inside the building, most likely. But mostly, you know, I'm pretty small, so everything can fit in that shop area where the kennels are once I get the kennels took out.
The carport when you?
Yeah, the carport area.
Are you going to enclose it also or are you going to leave it open?
Um, right where the he used, or used part of that, the truck. Uh, haven't really made plans on that, uh, would, how far, but I assumed I was going to close the whole thing and add a roll-up door on the front to get in and out of that whole area.
I think everybody's familiar with the, with the location and the buildings.
Right.
It used to be the, uh, favorite animal place. Um, so the existing fencing around there, is that three acres now or is it going to be bigger than that? Looking at the lot, the lot size is 17 acres, but the three acres, is that what's existing now that's fenced in?
I'll bring up John Kahn, he's, he's one more familiar.
John, if you want to come forward?
Yeah, I just want to have some questions about the acres also.
You're the agent in this, I think there's questions you can ask.
Starting with saying thank you all for your service. I'm John Kahn with Kahn Realty, 3386 Gray Highway. And I represent Ms. Moore on this property and we've been trying to lease it for a little while. That's one of those things, I feel like it's one of the easiest decisions you'll make, which always makes it scary. Because when they put the bypass in, there wasn't but one piece of commercial property along that bypass and this is it. You know, it had been a veterinary office and then certainly, we all know it was the animal control office when they put the bypass in. Even though it's owned agriculturally, it's always been used as a commercial use. When I spoke to Ms. Moore, what had transpired last year was, we had a local convenience store developer, they tell me, I have a copy of the letter of intent if y'all would like to see it. They came in and wanted to do a convenience store on that corner. And Ms. Moore does not want to sell that property. If y'all don't know, she lives in Missouri, Sister Claire lives up in Virginia. They're not selling the farm, they come home, she was here a week before last. That's, it's not going, she would do a long-term ground lease. That, uh, that convenience store in that case, said that didn't work for their pro forma, they wanted to buy. It didn't work. That acreage that you see is that acreage for two reasons. One, I thought, and this was an error on my part, for COVA, you know, for if you do your normal 10-year conservation, you need 12 acres too for the house and 10 for the conservation. But then they had done three acres they needed for that convenience store. So we left it at that to keep the COVA appropriate. That's why that plaque shows 14 and 3. But we do feel like the future use for that property is certainly commercial intent. When the bypass was put in, we expected commercial change. Probably the highest evidence that that is a good location for a convenience store would be the closed one at the Jimmy Roberts on at the corner of 129 and Clinton Street because the traffic patterns have changed because we put in a bypass. So the good news is we got the Moores as owners, they're always going to be responsible owners. To get to this zoning, we had two parties, Johnny here and another party that was a roofing company. And the roofing company was, did you get it, did you get it, did you get it? And Johnny was pretty laid back and nice and I was like, Christie, I'd rather deal with the easy guy than the did you get it, did you get it, did you get it guy? And just the truth of the matter.
Right.
But those are two different zones. You know, that would be C1 versus C2. They talked about possibly going to conditional uses within zonings. But that gets us coming back up here every time, hey, can we be a barber shop? Can we be a motorcycle repair shop? So the two things that I wanted to stress is that it clearly has commercial use for that parcel. And that the Moores are good local citizens, even though they don't live here now, and will always be good stewards of their land and their property. They don't have any further intention of developing any further behind there. And then lastly, that Johnny, he wants to buy real estate. He only expects to be here for a year or two to get his business up and going. And our lease that he will sign will require him to keep the property in good order. If he doesn't, we do it anyway and charge him back for it. Does it twice, we can put him out of the lease. So you got a lot of good barriers here to know it's going to be properly maintained and taken care of. And I'm excited for Johnny. I think it's a, a good for the community to get him in here doing his job. He's a local boy, graduated from Jones County Schools. I've heard good things about his work.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, that, that opens even more questions now.
Well, here's the other thing.
All right.
One more thing. As far as this barrier wall, and I'm sorry, I haven't looked closely at the overlay for the bypass. The bypass has an overlay for what's required between the bypass and property development. So we'll have to adhere to that clearly. And that's what I would ask you to ask him to adhere to. And then certainly on the change closing in where the kennels are would be appropriate to make sure that that meets the zoning codes, matches the building and that kind of stuff, which he intends to do, make sure it matches and looks nice. Christie's not going to let it go if it doesn't look nice. You got to get it by her before you get it by 10 and the community.
So, yeah, that's, that's the easy part. The, the bypass restrictions on the bypass that are already set for, for that, that, that's the easy part for me. I guess my concern is, you said, you know, it keeps us from having to come back and he's only going to be here a year or so and it may go to this and it may be that and it may be that. I think we were, I think part of our basic responsibility is that we have say-so in whether it's going to be this or that.
Well, you have this list of things that you're allowed to do within a zone.
But?
So we want to be able to do those things on that list.
Yeah.
And that's, isn't that right, isn't that why we have the list?
Yes.
You want to, you want to think about it, Commissioner Mark, please something, or you got?
I mean, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned that we know we're, we're wanting three acres and he's only going to use a small portion of that. And he's only temporary. And I know you said the family's never going to do this, never. I don't, I'd say never because if the price is right, the family will sell it. Yep.
Well, that's why it's closed and we've been working with it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think it's easy to say that the highest, the best use there is clearly.
Absolutely.
And it very well may be in the future.
Yeah. And I think we're.
Know that now and know it going forward.
I think we're all in agreement that the plan for the bypass, four corners on, on the bypass all along was commercial use. And I, and that's in our, our 10-year plan, that was the, the, but I don't think it was opening up to so many unknowns. I think I would vote right now absolutely for, for what he's talking about. My fear is not have, him saying he's only going to be there for a little while, opening up more acres than what he needs for his so that the next one that comes in, we don't, it doesn't even come in front of us, he's just okay.
That's why we have the zoning code, that's to see if there would be anything on that list, correct? And that's, that's the reason for it. It's commercial property and we decide what goes in commercial property. Isn't that right?
Well, well, am I wrong for thinking that that's kind of the cart in front of the horse to me? That we're not knowing before we vote to rezone it what it's actually going to be? Because we're, we're now here and it's only going to be for a year or two.
That's correct.
And we don't know what that's going to be. So that's why I come to and say, I want to rezone this commercial.
That's right.
With not knowing what it is.
That's correct. Because it's commercial property. The highest and best use for it is commercial property.
But it was on.
When we put in the bypass, it's commercial property.
But the commercial property was only that. So why are we not doing the 17 acres commercial then?
For conservation use, you'll have that in COVA. And that goes back to my era where I thought you had to have three out of a smaller parcel and, you know, they didn't want to impact the whole farm. And I feel like we're really doing, bringing this parcel into conformity with what it's always been and adjusting the size of it to accommodate offers we've already had to utilize that corner. Here again, I'm not trying to, I don't want to hide anything.
No.
And going forward, what's it going to be? A, a, a gas station is C2 commercial. Now, between now and should it ever happen? Well, it might, like I said, it might be a roofing company next time, that's C2. They'll have to come back and say, hey, y'all, we want to do a roofing company. And then they're there three years and we come back and that guy wants to be a barber shop. And I think that defeats the purpose of the zone, say, hey, we know that's commercial property. These are the allowed uses and y'all go to business and start paying taxes.
And I would say, you know, having been here when the bypass was put in, the intent was commercial. And C2 is a good fit for that corner, no different than the other corner at 18. I don't think it makes, for me, it doesn't make a difference. You know, as a real estate guy, it's C2, this is what we can do in C2, these are the allowed uses. Today, this is what it is. Tomorrow, it could be a gas station because that's okay. We know it can't be a rock quarry, right? And so as long as it conforms to the zoning, we're compliant and, and we're doing what's right in the ordinance and, and the law. When we start being, I think, so granular to say that only a motorcycle shop can go in there, then we have a problem because I don't think we have a right to dictate under a C2 designation that only a motorcycle shop can go there. Because then we need to start crossing off the list of what is allowable. And if that is a commercial zone, which it is designed to be, then whatever can fit under C2 should be allowable.
Some of the other things that I brought to y'all, but I feel like we all know where state highways hit the bypass, Eaton, 380 around Monticello, state highways at bypasses become commercial over time for grocery stores and gas stations. I would think in our community, the one corner or the corners that will be the more difficult to change will certainly be 11 at the spur because that's the scenic highway. You know, and I can see where the scenic highway group would come and say, we don't want to do that. The others at state highway though, that's a very consistent usage for this type of property.
Yeah. And I, you've been here too long to try to hide anything.
Amen.
So, so I know you're not trying to do anything that, that we don't. And, and I want to be real clear that I, I fully support this being commercial. We, we've talked about that in here, we've talked about it in our plan. I guess my only concern, or my, my main concern is the recommendation was approval for C1 with a conditional use. The request is for a C2 and we keep talking about C2.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with what zoning and planning suggest that I, I'm more inclined to support what the client is requesting. And I don't, I'm not a fenceable wall either. If there's an overlay that exists, let the overlay supersede what is, well, let the overlay dictate what needs to go out there. So if the client or the constituent wants C2 and that's what that area is designated for, that's what I'm inclined to support, not C1 just because they recommend it.
The request of C2, the recommendation P and T was C and one, C1 with conditional use. And so that gets in to come back regularly.
Come.
And then they approve because we said we preferred C2.
I got a Tim question.
And the planning zoning board approved C2 with the stipulation of the law.
All right, Tim, we've got a question.
I just wanted to clarify that the planning commission did recommend C2 with the stipulations that were.
Right.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Vaughn. I got a question, I got a Tim question. All right, so if it stayed Ag 1 with a conditional use?
Not this type of use, no ma'am.
Okay.
You'd have to go at least C1 with a conditional use.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anybody here tonight opposed for this?
I believe you got some.
Anyone opposed, wanted to come speak? Just introduce yourself.
I'm Sherri Rollins at 199 Atlanta Road. Thank y'all for your time. Um, I would definitely recommend a commercial use if you guys decide to go to C2. You guys are working on design guidelines for the gateways of our community. This is a primary gateway to our community. It can be done nice and be commercial. But you guys are the leaders of this community. You're the ones that have the authority to make those decisions and to dictate what goes there. The surrounding areas, as Johnny mentioned, Highway 11 and Eaton Highway both are two Ag gateways that are the prettiest gateways to our community. I ask that you strongly consider what goes there. I mean, I think a C1 is appropriate for this business. We've already heard that it's going to be a temporary thing. Where, what do you do when it goes out? You're opening up the gateways there to whatever, truck stops or convenience stores. And that's down the road, that may come to that and that is fine. But at this point, I mean, you guys are, are the leaders in the responsibility, not a real estate brokers that don't live in this community. You guys are the ones that live and give your time and service back and look at it every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here tonight in opposition to this request? Anyone? What the board want to do?
I'm, is it, it's in my district. I will make the recommendation for approval of a C1 with conditional use.
We have a motion for a C1, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
All right, we have a second for discussion. You want to start the discussion?
Tim, does that get him everything he needs to do to have his business commercial on that corner lot?
Yes, sir, everything specified in the application could be done.
We support his business and we want him to succeed.
Any more, any more discussion?
Does C1 align with our intent for the corridors of the bypass?
It is, it's commercial.
It's commercial.
It is commercial, but there's certain things that fit under C1 versus C2. So at one corridor, we have a full gas station with other things and at this corner, we're going to limit it.
I don't see it as limited, I see it as approving what's being asked now. We're approving the application so this business can operate as specified.
He asked for a C2.
Right, but all he needs is a C1.
But he, that's what he asked for.
You know, they're back, what?
I just want to know if we're going to do this, if every time somebody comes up, if they want something, we're going to give them something different than the application.
Uh, the, uh, comprehensive plan, what, eight years ago, nine years ago when we had it? There was two corners, that, that intersection and where Ranchers is right now were the two highlighted areas on that bypass for commercial growth. That, that was a designated area because we knew that would be the only two areas on that bypass that could have commercial growth. So it's been, it's been in a, you know, it's been in the comprehensive plan right after we first got elected, Mr. Kitchens. And that was, that was a, a, a big issue there to make sure it was designated. It's, it was designated a commercial. It didn't give a one or two, which is commercial use. I think C1 with a conditional would be accommodating this gentleman and getting him what he needs. And if we needed to come back at a labor date with somebody else to come in there, we, you know, there's four other corners there. So we never know, you know, who might be up, coming up next wanting to develop one of those other corners because all four corners are in our comprehensive plan for commercial.
I agree with that, Chairman. I think our intent has always been commercial on all four corners of the bypass. I think the barriers on the bypass in place now would dictate what will be seen from the bypass. So I, I'm not really concerned about putting up a fence to block everything from view because I do think that's hurting, probably going to hurt his business a little bit if he can't advertise that he's working on small vehicles. Um, he's already said that he's going to, he's not going to have storage out in the yard. He's got a place to, to store his equipment and stuff like that. So I don't, I don't have as much problem with that as, as I do not knowing what's next. And I think Mr. Rollins might have mentioned it best is, you know, there has been discussions since Ranchers came up about what is the gateway to our, to the bypass going to look like and what is all four corners of every crossroad going to look like? And, I mean, we've got some design controls in there from the beginning, but I think once we know, uh, I mean, we're, we're still talking infrastructure, water, sewer and all this kind of stuff. So it's not next year we're going to, I don't think it would be when, when he, you know, leaves his, his business there that we would be ready for another company. But if it comes in, I think that's when we need to, well, we need to make our plan before then. But that's when we need to make the decisions on what's highest and best use of that property. Right. And not, and not detrimental to the neighbor's property, which is one of some of those criteria that we have to look at every time we determine. And I just don't know what those answers are right now if I don't know what's, what's coming.
We know what C2 is, so it, it is, it's, it is what it is. At the end of the day, we all understand economic development to a certain degree, some more than others. The designation of the land also impacts that from a prospect standpoint. And if I'm a prospect and it has a C1 and I go back and I look at this video, then I'm concerned that they may not be palatable because we have to accommodate a special interest as opposed to abiding by the comprehensive plan and the request of the C2, which was actually approved by zoning planner. So that is the challenge and the crux here. You guys have the opportunity to vote as you do.
Well, um, I talked with Christie today also about the property and they have no intent whatsoever to ever sell that agriculture property that's all behind them. Never in a thousand years did she think that this piece of property was not already zoned as commercial because her dad's had a practice there all of his life. I worked there for two years for him. So, um, you know, just to see that we've had a piece of commercial property there for all these years, that it's never been commercial property and now we're having to, now that we got somebody that wants to be in there, I mean, we even ran the Jones County Animal Services out of there. So that was commercial too, correct? So I just, we need to do the right thing now, even if it's put the, the conditional uses on it. I think that that definitely needs to be done, is putting some conditional uses on there. Because I don't want it to, I know how small engines can get and when you're working on things and you run out of space to hide all of the unused parts. And that's the one thing that's got to be, we don't want that to be the visual right there. So that's my biggest concern is the visual of it, um, being there.
All right, any more discussion? Time for the vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Patraski, we've got one more on zoning.
Yes, sir, we have a variance request from Loretta Hurt. This is a variance to allow an additional lot on a private road. Uh, this is at 128 Thurman Way. Uh, the applicant didn't specify in the application if they were just going to be adding another home to this property or if they were actually going to be subdividing out a parcel to put the home on. So we went ahead and advertised it that way as it would be an additional lot. Uh, because this is a variance, there is not a recommendation from the planning commission.
All right, Ms. Hurt here tonight?
And if I can make a comment, as y'all can see, I'm the one who helped fill out the application on this. So I'm going to just send for my vote and go stand up with my friends here.
Okay.
How you doing today?
How you doing?
Nah, I'm ready to hang it up. Yeah, telling your name and address. Uh, my name is Loretta Hurt. I lived at 153 Thornton Drive. Uh, my house burnt down, my mama, I was staying with my mama and it burnt down a year ago. And I've been living here and there trying to keep a roof over my head. And I was donated a mobile home and I need a place to put it because my brothers don't want to do right with my mama's property. So I need somewhere to put it today. Down on Thurman Way. And it's an estate property that is family members that have given her a partial of land there on the estate for her to put the double-wide trade with that's been donated to her.
Any questions for Ms. Hurt? Any? Anyone here tonight opposed for this request? Anybody opposed? Let's hope for a motion.
This district. Motion to approve request.
Second, any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Nice having.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to Senate General Approval Minutes. We have the third Tuesday of March 19th, uh, and the executive session also on March 19th. If y'all had opportunity to review the minutes, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, new business supplemental LM, LMIC fund application. Mr. Ressler, you and Tim.
Just some information, I, I think I'd emailed this out to the board a couple of weeks ago. The state approved some, some supplemental LMIC funding. Over on the second page there, towards the bottom, just below the red line. Over on the second page there, towards the bottom, just below the red line, uh, is Jones County Unincorporated. The amount that we'll be receiving is nine hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. This LMIG money does not require a match, and so just wanted to come before the board tonight and, and ask, you know, what projects you would like us to, uh, to do with, with this LMIG money. The application window runs until, uh, June fifteenth. So don't have to make a final decision tonight, but, um, just wanted to go ahead and, and get that conversation started.
Do we just continue on down our list of what was not funded by the LMIG? There wasn't there a road or two that got, based on our, um, based on our surveys of the roads that, that was needed to be moved in somewhere? I think it was in your district, wasn't it?
I think so. I don't remember them directly. I know they were on the list. You know, I'm okay with working off the old list, um, to address those things, since this is LMIG funding.
I was thinking there was one that was like, uh, and I'm going one being best, five being worst, that went from a two to a five in a year's period.
Yep.
Can we wait for more funding for that? If not, I, I mean, I'm.
I can move them up the list.
Yeah, I'd be willing to. Because we've always talked about being the, the highest need.
Right.
If they rank the worst, uh, I mean, if we're all in agreement that that's the route to go, maybe you can bring back, because I don't remember the names of the road, but maybe there were one or two that needed to move up.
Okay.
Bring it back for something for us to vote on.
Yeah, I think one of the issues we had was there weren't many, maybe zero, I think it was in District Three, on that list, sort of the ten worst roads. Do you see any?
Yeah, she didn't have any.
And so I think that was where we were trying to find some, you know, down a little further to, to move up.
Well, and then on the, that same list, we had a few things that were, that were, um, private roadways and in the city of Gray. Now that's a new, I'm sure it was.
Yes, I think in my district too, it was a bunch of pieces, and it was kind of silly to do one and not do the other, so we talked about putting them together.
Get your economy scaled.
I think, I think the issue in yours, though, today, a lot of those, uh, pieces were like cul-de-sacs where the buses were trying to turn around. And that's why they were put in there, because the cul-de-sacs were,
Tore up.
You know, tore up, so that's why those pieces got put in there.
Gotcha.
And, uh, I mean, you know, we spent the money and I, I mean, we, we've got the people there every day know, knows what our needs are. I'm for letting our staff, you know, bring their recommendations and go on with that, because they know better than any of us, you know, what our needs are.
So generally speaking, we just want to go continue on down that list, but look for, uh, some roads from District Three to add in, and then look at, I, I know in the subdivision there off Joy Cliff on the left, um, what, what was number ten on that, the one we wrote on the bottom?
Oh, it's Prince Hilton Road and Princess Anne.
So in, in that neighborhood,
Yeah, Princess Anne.
There were several roads in there, little short ones.
That's just cul-de-sacs, that's got like six houses on them.
And so it might make sense to do, you know, a larger, the whole thing or a larger portion of it. We could look at that too and.
Castle Court, Regency Court, um, Prince Hilton, um.
Yeah, it was a bunch of pieces. I, I'd be in support of that, obviously. Because I don't think we hit nine hundred thousand, because they were small portions. And then again, continuing down the list with what's next.
Thank you that we're having this nine hundred thousand, because we can use it right now.
What's that?
Thank goodness we've got it, nine hundred thousand, because we've been, we've been badmouthing what we need help for, and that's, that's a start.
Yep. All right, that sounds good. We'll bring that list back to you next time.
All right, no action needed on that. It's time till a later date.
Just postpone it.
Yeah, if I get a motion postponed to next meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, elevated tank, Mr. Ingram?
In your packet tonight is a, some information on the elevated tank bid that we opened up on March twenty-second. This board had voted to, to use a pedestal-style tank as the base bid. If you look after the bid tabulation, there's a general pan, plan of a pedestal-style tank in your packet. And this was the base bid. Phoenix Fabricators and Reckers of Avon, Indiana, was low at three million, two forty-four, three twenty-nine. That is, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon elevated tank, be about a hundred and sixty-two feet tall. Fencing, site work, piping, uh, everything we need to put the tank up. As a alternate, we included a bid for a leg tank, a multi-column tank that looks similar to this one. That's, uh, the base bid was two million, eight fifty-four, eight thirty-five. About three hundred and ninety thousand dollars difference in cost. Our recommendation was to go with the multi-column leg tank, just for the savings.
Tim, would that be in the cleared-out area now, or is it going to be moved back?
No, it'll be up in the front area. That, that's cleared now.
Okay, so there's no opportunity to take that extra land and sell it as, uh, it won't work when there's not enough room?
About a year and a half, whenever we get this other tank up, they'll do whatever you want to with it.
This one the same height than everything, Tim?
Yeah, yeah.
So you'll take it right on the corner and then the area right behind it, be an opportunity for us?
There'll be two good lots left.
Okay, good then. That'll help, uh, offset some costs right there down the road.
This, uh, this site was chosen, as some of y'all may know, we, we ran a pressure, digital pressure gauge on it. During the summer, pressure runs around forty pounds on the corner. During winter time, when City of Gray's not pulling, it runs around seventy. It should be seventy all the time. So that, there's enough demand that it pulls down, pulls the pressure down. So our, our recommendation is to go with the leg tank. There's a little bit more steel with it, there's a little bit more maintenance with it. The base bid pedestal tank is the easiest to secure. There's a door on the bottom of it, there's one way in, one way out. The third alternate that we, we took a price on was a composite tank, which is a concrete shaft and a steel bowl up top. As you see, they were, they were not really in, in the ballpark.
Tim, looking at the price difference, about four hundred thousand difference. What, you said there's more maintenance with the steel leg tank?
Yes.
Maintenance cost per year? Approximately, what is it with the bid, you know, the base bid with versus alternate two? I'm just looking at maintenance cost over a ten, twenty-year cycle.
Some, it, it takes twenty to thirty years to make the difference up.
Okay.
It's somewhere between eighteen and twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars difference a year.
Okay.
That's what I've, what I've been told.
I was just wondering. That was, that was my question, how long would it take to make that difference up?
Twenty years life cycle.
Right, okay.
Any other questions for Tim?
Motion to approve the alternate number two at two point eight five, four million.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Done. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you.
Thanks for saving us that money.
And, uh, they both hold water. They both the right heights, and, uh, I think we'll, we won't go wrong with either one of them. Thank you.
Now we move to, uh, asphalt packing with, uh, Brandon. I think Jason, you were going.
Yeah, I'll back on that.
All right, you're back up. Hey, Jason, you see, you, you're going to have Brandon to back up tonight.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start, and then he can handle the hard questions. So this was kind of a joint effort between the, the Water Department and Public Works. Occasionally, both departments have a need for asphalt patching, and, uh, with our bid thresholds and so forth, or our, our purchasing thresholds, uh, when it's over five thousand dollars, we have to get three quotes. And that's, uh, a little bit cumbersome for, for small patches, and so it doesn't take much to get over five thousand dollars now. And so, um, they worked together, worked with Julie, and, and put together a bid package, um, for asphalt patching, kind of on-demand asphalt patching. And, um, the intent of the, the RFP was, uh, to have multiple vendors, so if you called one, uh, and, and they weren't available, you got another one to, to turn and call. And so,
Good idea.
Um, we sent that out. We got two responses. The, uh, the low one there was, uh, the Concrete Constructors, um, and, uh, and then second was Asphalt Specialty Services. And, and so I think our recommendation would be to, to award, um, it, it's a one-year agreement with options for renewal, to award the, uh, award it to, to those two vendors in that order, Concrete Constructors and, and Asphalt Specialty.
Any questions for Mr. Resner or?
Jason, are these local? I don't see any addresses with the, uh, bid package. I was curious if they were local companies.
Concrete Constructors is out of Madison, um, and then Asphalt Specialty, I think is out of Macon.
He's, he's more local?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so we, we specified in the RFP, uh, Brandon may be able to remember, a, a certain number of days that they had to, uh, to respond, or we could move on to the next one, and so we'll, uh, that's the language we had in the RFP, and that we'll certainly have that in the contract too, just that, clarifying that, you know, time is of the essence kind of thing on, on this.
So I do have a question. The eight-inch compacted gab per square foot? Um, one company's literally a third to maybe a half. Somebody explain to me why there'd be that much fluctuation, anybody?
I, I can't explain why there's that much difference in the price. Kind of as we've looked at this and talked about it after the fact, ninety-nine percent of the time, we'll put the GAB in the hole, and, um, because it's going to be a situation where we have to stabilize it with, with GAB, and then they'll just be coming back and doing the, the asphalt patch. So I, I, we ask for those prices, and, and that's what we got, but, um, I, I would probably say the vast, vast majority of the time.
I would almost say a hundred percent of the time, we wouldn't be buying GAB from them.
Hope so, because at thirty dollars a square foot?
It, if you do the math, I did two hundred and fifty square foot. I did several different square footage and did all the math and everything. When you get over seven hundred and twenty square foot, it's swapped from asphalt. If you're considering GAB.
Oh, yeah.
It, it swaps, um, so the asphalt specialty would be cheaper. But at no point, if, if we have to saw cut a road, we're, we're going to pack it ourselves with GAB.
Okay.
Uh, crush and run, so you can still drive over it. You don't have, you know, you don't have to wait four days for the asphalt to come in.
Right.
And then they have to come in, clean about four inches of it out.
Really, the only situation where we would look for, for a vendor like that to do GAB is if we, if we planned out a covert replacement far in advance, and we said, look, uh, you know, you handle that part of it, roll it into the, to the project cost. But I mean, you know, like Brandon said, probably a hundred times out of a hundred, we'd just do that ourselves.
Whatever you do, don't use concrete to, to do that part.
Right.
Just a generic question, Chairman. I know at one time, when, when we were having our, uh, quarterly governmental, uh, meetings with the city and the school board, are they able to piggyback off these, or did we talk about that?
We haven't talked with them about that, but we'd certainly be open to that.
Yeah, I thought we, at one point, we talked about getting a, an agreement, basically a piggyback agreement with all three of them. And I'm pretty sure it can be done with all being government agencies, but that, that may get us better prices down the road, higher quantities.
Yeah, absolutely.
I need a motion to go forward with the current bids, uh, recommendation.
Another question, but I can, I can ask that later.
Go ahead, let's get a motion in a second.
Motion, yeah.
Yeah, uh, motion to approve the bid as, uh, proposed, Chairman, with the, uh, being able to alternate the contractors as needed, based on lowest price first.
Got a second. Got three seconds almost. Any more discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Kitchen.
Uh, mine was more about the bid threshold. I mean, I know in my day job, we've increased it recently. Is that based on the cost of goods now? Is that something we need to look at?
It, it's probably time to do that, yeah. With, those were put into place seven, seven-ish years ago now.
And we've seen seventy percent increase since twenty twenty, so.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Like I always have it. Thank you. Old Business, Commissioner Wood, Union Hill Church Road Bridge update.
Yes, I'm going to lean on Tim and Jason on this. I think, uh, I'm going to reach out. I've had constituents ask about where we're at on the bridge replacement process, and I think we are environmental, working on the environmental side of things.
We still are.
Still are. It takes time dealing with the federal government and.
Okay, that way they can hear you.
Our, our problem, best we can tell, one of the federal lands around us and the, the person we're dealing with could be my child, but I don't have a lot of experience with the core engineers. This is our latest submission. This is our fourth or fifth one, trying to answer questions and make them feel comfortable with what we're doing.
Right.
And we have not, uh, we've not gone over his head. But this is the ninth month we've been dealing with this. Maybe time to go with this.
Right, I know we were awarded a DOT grant that paid a good portion of this bridge.
Correct.
And we were against a May, late May deadline to start on this project, and I think, um, DOT does consider us working on the project with the paperwork side of things. So we are, we are moving forward, even though we aren't moving dirt. So we are moving forward with this project.
Okay, I'm sorry, just think, you got me thinking, what office are we having to work with on?
MARA. The, the old, the, the old MARA office in Atlanta.
Okay, so it's not a local one we can deal with. It's a local one. I know a lot of folks that are still in that office, but, uh, so we're in Atlanta, and they were. I want you to know who I could call or.
You know, this Nationwide Permit Three A is for the replacement and maintenance of existing roadway features and structures. Obviously, we fall under that, but we're, we're doing stuff that you would typically do on a Nationwide Permit, trying to get the guy up easy. So it, we're really getting to a point, if something doesn't happen soon, uh, we're going to have to call somebody above him to make it move.
Okay, might need that call now.
Right.
Well, I hate to call him. If he'll take this, if he'll take this next, next submission and, and get it signed, we'll be good to go. But if he comes back with another one, I think we have to make the call.
Just time is of the essence for the inconvenience for those constituents and residents in that area.
Well, I've, I've got three other road projects going on, and we're doing Nationwide Permit Three As on all of them. And every one of them have taken five months. And I mean, we're, we're taking out old culverts and putting in new culverts, and they're taking five months. Just basic stuff. And, uh, and from what I can tell, and, and that's dealing with the Savannah District, and what I can tell not all the people back in the office. We're dealing with young people. Some of them, this may be their first job. It's, it's just been a, it's just been an ordeal.
All right.
I appreciate the update and. Thank you.
Thank you. Any department heads? You got anything?
Not there.
Missing anybody in the crowd? Anybody hiding in the back? Mr. Resner?
I was going to ask real quick about the community cleanup, uh, date. Got a couple of responses back on the doodle poll, and it looks like, um, May fourth or May eighteenth are the two, that look to be the best so far. I just wanted to run that by everybody and see if y'all had a preference between the two of those, or if there were other dates we wanted to look at.
Thoughts? Commissioner Kitchen? Commissioner Bob?
I'm good either one of those, Chairman.
Yeah. Either one of them, ladies, you want?
I was pulling up my calendar real quick to see, hold on.
Commissioner Kitchen said, whatever day you can get the less, least amount of help.
Yeah, May the fourth, but we plan on doing it in more than time to have more. And then that way, those that help can go to Old Clinton. I, either one of those are good for me. I, the school's still in, so either one of those are good for me.
Let's get it over before it gets too.
Right.
May fourth?
Just get it over.
Huh? What's that now? What's that now?
Let's get it on. Is that Miss Sam's under her breath over there? Let me get my butt beat again.
All right, May fourth?
I'm good with it, May fourth sounds like a win.
I just, I, I just got it, it is saved. I got it at seven, at six P M. I bet, I won't, I'll be late, won't I?
Yes, you would.
All right. All right. Anything else, Mr. Resner? They will get anything forward? Oh, wow. Citizen comment, anyone want to come forward tonight?
My name is Ken Adams, I live at four thirty East Virginia Lane. Wendy, I agree with you a hundred percent about the visual, a hundred percent. If I could get half as much concern in my neighborhood as y'all are concerned with the bypass, would be on to something. So, um, do any of y'all have any idea how many postponements that there were on the containers and cleaning up this yard in the past year? Four postponements in the year, two postponements on the cleanup. And in the end, we end up with the prosecutor that dismisses charges, everything. That's not right. It's not right. Nothing was done. The yard looks like a trash dump to this day. I have to walk out my back door every morning and look at this. Y'all have full authority to do something about it. If I need to bring that from the state legislators and present it to y'all next meeting, I will. Saying that you have full authority to handle this and correct it and overturn it if need be. But do I need to bring that evidence to y'all? Anybody? Sure. I'll be happy to, because it's in fact, I mean, you got, you got authority to do it. And, you know, it's amazing to me that the treatment that a citizen that pays taxes gets and is getting in these commissioners meeting. I've watched the videos from all these meetings on this over and over. The first couple of meetings, it's obvious not a single commissioner was happy with this. You weren't happy, you weren't happy, you weren't happy, and you weren't happy. Nobody was happy, but now all of a sudden, your attorney has put a zipper on your mouth. That's sad. That's a sad situation that we are in this county. I was promised transparency from day one by one of these commissioners. The only thing that's been transparent is the dirtiness on this whole issue. It's really sad that we've got to that point. But I'm just gathering my evidence, you know, I'm keep chugging along, nothing's happened. I just keep gathering evidence. I got, everything I got, y'all could have got. So I'm hoping one day that y'all will be willing to be a man and a woman and let's negotiate this. I'm not saying I'm, it's gotta be all my way, I'm willing to negotiate a little bit. But not a single one of y'all has got the guts to stand up and be a man and let's handle this like men. That's all I got to say tonight. I'll see you in two weeks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Commissioner comments, who wants, Commissioner Martin, you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Parker, I appreciate that, because I feel the same way. Because it wouldn't be in other people's neighborhoods or other people's districts, and it's not okay. That board should be ashamed of themselves, the facts should be removed. But I didn't get a second when I motioned it, so here we are. Um, I want to thank the sheriff, because as I was cycling the other day, I saw the cleaning crew out there on Griswold Road picking up trash. So you have a distinct advantage at this point, because they picked up a bunch of trash. With that being said, um, I hope.
In your zone, not mine.
Yeah, I know. It's okay, it's okay. I'm excited about what we're doing with the fire department. I hope that, um, we get a good solution, um, implemented quickly, uh, for the benefit of all. And most importantly, for reducing, um, our response times and of course, our insurance and I S O ratings. And then, of course, we got some L M E G money, which was impressive. I don't know, you know, how it happened, but I'm thankful. And I hope not only my district, but another district gets impacted by these resources and somebody's roads get taken care of. Um, citizens, we did have a work session earlier about, uh, L M E G, um, not L M E G, but, um, some roads and, uh, the fire department, y'all should come listen, um, and not roads with T-Splash. Come listen, um, because that's the other part that, that is going to make a difference too as we go forward. Other than that, I'm thankful. My father's doing better, so I'm just happy to be here.
That's your prayer, that he's in our prayers, that's for sure.
So thank everybody for the prayers, appreciate it.
Commissioner Bowles?
I came back from spring break to be here tonight, so I left the mountains, yes, yes.
So are we supposed to clap?
Yes. I told y'all two weeks ago I wasn't gonna be here.
Some of us didn't go, because of the.
But since I was supposedly the absent commissioner that's never at the meetings, I wanted to make sure that I'm here in attendance today. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, um. Going in other places and seeing the way different things, I, I, I'm amazed all the time when I get told how come Bibb County can do this and that and this and that, and I drive to go to Macon, I have to drive. Usually if I go, I go forty-nine, because that's where I live. And as soon as you get into Bibb County there, I think, why does people come to the Cherry Blossom Festival? What draws that many people to the Cherry Blossom Festival? And how much money they say that they make off the Cherry Blossom Festival? Not all of Bibb County is nice and clean like they, the places that they spectators come to to see. And of course, the Cherry Blossom Trail is beautiful. I think when you pull, come into Jones County in any way you come into it, you see so many different beautiful things in our county. If it's the open fields with the cows out there in the middle of the pastures, if it's the old antebellum house that might be sitting on one corner in a brick house ranch style that's sitting right beside it on the other side of the road. We have so many advantages here in Jones County. We have so many different things. You know, you come into Haddock and you're greeted by all of the older houses that are down through there that are just beautiful. We all need to take pride, everybody, um. And I, and it is a pride, it's an individual pride, because me and my old boss, Mr. Collins, used to ride around looking at bus stops and he would go, how does somebody live with their grass that high? And it's pride, it's just taking pride. And that's one thing that I can hopefully know that my mom and dad passed on to me is to have pride in what your personal space looks like. And, um, I guess that's why one of my biggest pushes for trying to do the cleanup days and get as much help as I can so that I can be, Sam. So with that being said, I'm grateful every time that I travel and that I come back home and I see my nice agriculture and my nice commercial spaces that are clean and the residential spots that are clean too that's from our roadway, so. Thank you for everybody that helps contribute to that. And I know that I'm safe every night when I go to bed because our sheriff's department and our fire department and our E M A. And, you know, Brandon keeps that water going everywhere that they have it. And all the departments keep everything great. And I'm thankful that Bert and his family are okay after their accident going out of town for Easter weekend. So I'm just grateful. And proud. Next.
Commissioner Wood?
I think Wendy covered it for everybody.
Yep, Toby, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm thankful to be from Jones County and I'm thankful for every person in this county because we have great sheriff, we have great fire department, all the personnel, water department, public works, library. It's everybody. It makes a community and we call it home.
Commissioner Kitchen, you got, you got a challenge, just, I just heard.
Oh, I ain't standing on it.
Yeah, that's the.
Uh, Chairman, I want to make two comments just to, to clarify. Our attorney doesn't zip our lips. Our attorney is hired to give us solid legal advice. And that's what she does. And when we take it, we're in a better position, so, uh, I'm gonna leave that at that. I will have to respectfully disagree with my, uh, co-commissioner over here, uh, in that the board needs to be removed. I will agree one thousand percent with Mr. Adams that I don't like the decision, but I don't like a lot of decisions that are made. That don't mean that I need to try to change them. That means I don't like them, and if we give that authority to a board to make that decision, we have to respect that decision. And so I don't think anything was done that that board needs to be removed. If we're gonna remove a board every time we don't agree with something they do, we, we, we're gonna be in for a long road. So that's my opinion.
Anything else?
Wendy be ready.
I knew you had to get that last one in. Well, we won't be needing personnel tonight or executive session, so Commissioner Bowles?
I'm making a motion to adjourn meeting.
Second.
All in favor, I?
Aye.
No executives.